Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 9th, 2017 Regular Meeting. We're gonna start with Utilities Authority, so I'd like to welcome everybody. At this time, I'd like to invite Mike Carter from the First Baptist Church to come up and give our invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you because we need your help, and Lord, we call upon you because we ask for your help with stewardship. You have given us many blessings with which we are to be stewards of, and so we ask that we would be, you would lead us into being good stewards of all the resources you've given to us, from your kindness and your goodness to us. We pray also just for the integrity of honesty and hard work and those values which you have instilled in us. We pray that those would be forefront in what we do tonight. Lord, we also just pray for wisdom. Pray that you would lead us in wise decisions, that this would be a community, a place where there is justice, where there is, where it's a favorable place to live because it is wisely governed. And so, Lord, we pray for your help with these things, so that all the decisions that would be made tonight would not only be pleasing and honoring to you, but it would be that
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay.
which would be that towards the improvement of our community, and all the decisions would
Under public comments and announcements, first we had a request from Mr. Don Howell
be a reflection of our desire to be pleasing to you and your wisdom and your character
to make some comments, so we'll let him go first, and then after that, we'll see who's
here tonight. So, Lord, we ask for your help here tonight in this time.
next.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Mr. Howell.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to ask all the veterans to lead us in the pledge to our wonderful flag on
You know, as being a former city manager for most of my life, I can remember, oftentimes
this night before Veterans Day.
we don't tell the story of some accomplishments and achievements.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
And I feel like we've not been as responsive or as proactive in the community of listing
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
some of those and sharing some of those accomplishments and achievements with City
all.
Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Council and with the community of Guyman. And I'd like to just mention a few tonight, just to kind of put those out in front, and
Crowe?
we're gonna put them in an annual report that will be distributed among the city and
Here.
Alvedras?
Here.
the community.
Swager?
But there's been a lot of value add that our relationship has brought.
Here.
Livinggood?
Here.
Peterson?
When we first came before you, we described this as a partnership, and we said partnerships
Here.
Hawkins?
Here.
Mitchel?
Here.
give and take, and they both take risk and they both reap rewards and benefits.
Ms. Hawkins is representing Guyman at ENID at Leadership Oklahoma this week. Agenda item number three, agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
So these are some of the things that a true partnership does. We consider this an agreement to serve you and not a legal contract that we operate
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
under. Let me just list a few.
Second.
As far as local contributions, we've provided $5,000 to the YMCA.
Have a motion and a second.
Crowe?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We provided $5,000 to the Firefighters Ball, which was their fundraiser.
Swager?
We provided $125,000. This does not come out of tax money. This is coming out of IBTS corporate funds. $125,000 to the city for the purchase of two fully equipped police vehicles. We've had four community cleanup projects, including Sunset Lake, for example. We have gifted to the city furniture, equipment, and video conferencing system. We refunded 5.5 million dollars, $500,000, to the city from the services contract savings in 2016. We've supported the Chamber of Commerce with table sponsorships and Guyman High School athletics. We've audited utility billing accounts and corrected the billings, increasing the revenue, but more importantly, leveling the playing field between businesses and residents, so that everyone's paying on the same basis. We're currently providing 88 employees in the city of Guyman. We're only billing you and charging you for 80, 85 of which are from Guyman, Oklahoma, contrary to some recent public information. Eighty-five of those employees came from Guyman or the surrounding community. Seventy-five of those 88 employees live in the Guyman city limits. We coordinated with the city engineer to provide tax dollar savings on community projects, improvement projects. We've initiated cooperation among all departments and department heads to gain efficiencies while using people and equipment to improve services and costs. Words like "it's not my job" or "that's my backhoe" don't exist anymore, and there's a great synergy and an economy of scale in doing that, and we've initiated that program. It has resulted in a reduction in overtime cost to the city as well. In 2016, IBTS paid the total insurance cost for this project of $650,000, and we only asked you to reimburse us $240,000 of that. In 2018, we've lowered insurance premiums by $100,000 as a result of safety and risk management policies and procedures. We've provided the city with a lump sum not to exceed contract, which means whatever cost run over our contract, that's our problem. We don't come back to you and ask for a change order, ask for any other money. An example of that is TCEC increased rates last year, effective in March. It cost IBTS $160,000 more than we had in our budget. We haven't asked for one dime of that. We completed the comp plan for the city. We've increased license and certification of key staff in the city planner, the building official and others. Provided RFQs for city soccer complex and downtown streetscape, which has saved the city professional design fees. We've managed the FEMA reimbursement on behalf of the city for the ice storms, which resulted in a $50,000 payment to the city from FEMA. We've gifted this year street repair equipment in the amount of $30,000 at absolutely no cost to the city. You'll own that from now on. Cost comparisons very quickly. In 2016, we had a 10-month contract, which was $8,330,000. Of that, we refunded $500,000 to the city from the savings for net contract cost in 2016 of 7.7 million. In 2017, our contract was $9,366,000 and reflected an 8% price reduction requested by the city in negotiations last year. On top of that, we waived a 3% escalation clause that's in our contract. In 2018, working with the city manager this week, this is an approximate figure because it's gotta be approved and obviously rechecked, but we expect the cost to be $8,956,000, which is a 4.37% price reduction over the current year, and we've waived the 3% escalation cost. This will be provided to you and to the citizens in some communications, but we just felt like it was appropriate to bring this to the public's attention and certainly the council, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments and announcements?
Any other public comments and announcements? Okay, agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to authorize Cardinal Engineering to advertise for bids on the eight-inch forced main lift station and gravity line project. Scope of services? It's gonna be up there in a second.
Up there in a second. This is the final project. Remember, we had some money in the 2015 revenue bond that we needed to obligate, and this is the project that was selected. We authorized the engineer to proceed in late September. He's prepared the construction documents, and we're now ready to go out for bid on the project. This is a forced main project on Hurlemon, and we think the engineer's estimate for the project's about $850,000, and hopefully we'll get some very competitive bids and be able to start the project after the first of the year.
Any discussion and questions?
I'll make a motion that we authorize Cardinal Engineering to advertise for bids on the eight-inch forced main lift station and gravity line project. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crowe?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Starting new business, not withstand adjourned as a Guyman Utilities Authority. And we'll... Everybody on the... Technology, isn't it wonderful?
Well, it is.
Yeah, it's easy for you to say.
You poke kids with my knuckles.
You're good. All right. I call to order the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. We've done numbers one, two, and three. We've done number four, but if, we'll ask again, is anybody having public comments and announcements? Okay, agenda item number five is to administer the oath of office to new police officers, Jacob Rivera and Casey Gore. So a few gentlemen and families and the chief would like to come up front. Do you free to come up here and stand behind me, because behind every good man, there's a better one. Good evening, gentlemen. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Casey Gore.
Do hereby softly swear that I will support and obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of Oklahoma.
Of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
Of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
The duties.
The duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
During such time.
During such time.
As I am a police officer.
As I am a police officer.
For the City of Guyman.
For the City of Guyman.
Ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna turn it over to the spouses. report by Artist Incubation.
Thank you. Can I hand you an invitation?
Thank you.
Personally inviting you to our next event next Saturday night. I'm coming.
Thank you.
You're still invited.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
No, I don't need it. You keep it.
Thank you. You're still invited if you didn't get a card. Okay, I'm supposed to be talking about October. We did participate in Harvest Festival with the city folks. I guess a lot of locations, a lot of merchants got involved this year. At Artist Incubation, all fired up gallery, we held a mini art camp for school age kids during the fall school break, and we worked again on our Christmas open house, and as you see in my report, we have new merchants this year. We've had a goal since the beginning of our Christmas open house to have at least 30 participants, because we've always felt if you live in Raleigh, Kansas, and you here, there are 30 merchants gonna open their doors and make festive that night. You want to load up and come to Guyman. So I think we're gonna hopefully get those this year, but there's a few new merchants along. When you start over at By His Hands and you go north, you know, there's a few new merchants, and so we think we've got some insurance agencies and others that are gonna throw down with us and participate. So we have not only three carriages this year, but I think we have John Reekan to drive around and chauffeur in his special bus that he has, so that we can get farther out, like on East Street, over to the Wolf Creek Mall and those areas. So, we're kind of expanding this year, so we hope to have a great year for that. Let's see. Upcoming events, of course, I just invited you to our annual miniature art show. It's next Saturday. This kind of kicks off the buying season for the gallery, for people to buy art for gifts for Christmas. It's a great time in there. It's very festive and it's decorative. Decorated nice. Let's see, what else are we doing? We are going to have some culinary art classes very soon, so I hope you guys considering, some of you guys have mentioned you'd actually take some of those classes. We are still working on our licensed kitchen. We're waiting on some contractors. Still working on our Made in Guyman campaign, that you could sell products out of there that were just made in Guyman. And we just had a dinner last night for our artists, including the students at Oklahoma Panneel State University, so that was a good time. I guess for marketing, I would tell you that we do use the Guyman logo on our outdoor and our print and our radio taglines and social and all kinds of things, and we also put you in our newsletter. And if you don't get our newsletter currently, I don't know why, but I would like to have your email and be able to send that to you. That is my report for what we have done in October and what we're getting ready to do.
Any questions?
Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Agenda item number seven is presentation of the monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kayla. I'm a board member, and I'm covering for Melin. She's a training in Durant this week. I was supposed to talk about, let's see, I've never done this before, so bear with me. We did, how I got involved in Main Street was Cassie's Kids, which is a mentoring group that we do through Main Street. I've had my mentor since she was 13, and now she's 17. Really cool program. We did Cash Mob. We had seven mobsters. Whispering Bliss, which is a new boutique in Guyman. We had Lunch Mob was at Pizza Hut. We had 13 people there. We had the people who use the office. We had Toastmasters, MPC, HC. And also, we are working on Shop Small Saturday, which is November 25th. We're gonna start at 8:00 in the morning, serving breakfast, and then the local merchants around will have deals and sales to kind of go with the Black Friday thing. And we actually started a committee, so this year, for it. And I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of the site access agreement between T-Mobile Communications and the City of Guyman for installation and maintenance of communication equipment on the Seaboard Farms Water Tower.
Right. This is simply a discussion item tonight, no action required, but I've been talking with Branch Communications for the last couple of months, and you can see by the attachment that they are interested in putting up communication equipment on the Seaboard Water Tower, and they understand the terms and conditions of the agreement that we have with Verizon, and they seem to be open and receptive to entering the same type of agreement. So if I don't hear any objection from the council, then I'll proceed to draft the access agreement and then follow that up with the permit for them to execute, and the terms and conditions will be very similar to Verizon's. So their lease payment for the first year would be about $24,000, and then that would escalate 3% a year for 20 to 25 years. So it will mirror the agreement we have with Verizon, and I can answer any questions you might have, but at this point, it's pretty preliminary.
Is Branch Communications subsidiary of T-Mobile?
I think they're the subcontractor for T-Mobile. They're out of Tulsa, and I've talked to Mr. Williams, and I'm not, I can't remember the woman that I've spoken to, but they've been here in the community a couple of times, and they're very interested in securing that agreement from the city.
You mentioned that's gonna be like the Verizon agreement. The scope of work, will it be the same as well, depending on how much power they're gonna send up the antenna?
Yes. We don't have any design yet. We don't have any site work or design yet for their equipment, but it should be somewhat similar from what I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to increase municipal court fees charged to defendant where there is a conviction from $25 to $30 for court cost and from $10 to $20 for OSBI fees as passed by the Oklahoma State Legislature effective November 1, 2017.
Request from the municipal clerk. You have anything to add to that, David?
No. Nope, that's, when you don't raise money any other way, you raise the court costs in all the little cities and towns around the state, so that's what's happened.
I wanted to raise the CLEA cost as well, but we can't do that, right?
No, that's a fee imposed by the State of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
That might go up next year too, depending on what...
Probably could.
I don't know how much that would have to go up to raise 250 million, but quite a bit, I would think.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I make a motion that we accept the increase for municipal court fees charged to defendant when there is a conviction from $25 to $30 for court cost and from $10 to $20 for OSBI fees. Item nine.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action on authorizing the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to keep the workman's compensation escrow balance of $43,849.29 on deposit or to refund a portion or all to the City of Guyman. There's a letter attached. Mr. Mitchell?
Right. Our recommendation is that we send a letter to OMAG asking them to release $50,000 and to keep the balance, which would be about $3,084 in the escrow account in case there's a claim. But this is a result of reducing our workers' comp claims under the insurance program that we have through OMAG, and this is another example of ways that we're saving money by the safety programs that IBTS has incorporated into their management agreement. Our recommendation is that we request $50,000 to be remitted to the City of Guyman.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Are we, our workman's comp through OMAG, is that, that covers everybody working for the city?
Yes. And those insurance rates are coming down.
Any other questions? Discussions? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve authorization to write a letter to OMAG to release $50,000 and leave the balance on deposit for the City of Guyman.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Mr. Livinggood.
Crowe?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Starting new business, not withstand adjourned as a Guyman Utilities Authority. And we'll... Everybody on the... Technology, isn't it wonderful?
Well, it is.
Yeah, it's easy for you to say.
You poke kids with my knuckles.
You're good. All right. I call to order the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. We've done numbers one, two, and three. We've done number four, but if, we'll ask again, is anybody having public comments and announcements? Okay, agenda item number five is to administer the oath of office to new police officers, Jacob Rivera and Casey Gore. So a few gentlemen and families and the chief would like to come up front. Do you free to come up here and stand behind me, because behind every good man, there's a better one. Good evening, gentlemen. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Casey Gore.
Do hereby softly swear that I will support and obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of Oklahoma.
Of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
Of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
The duties.
The duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
During such time.
During such time.
As I am a police officer.
As I am a police officer.
For the City of Guyman.
For the City of Guyman.
Ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna turn it over to the spouses. All right, agenda item number six is presentation of the monthly activities and the financial report by Main Street Guyman. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kayla. I'm a board member, and I'm covering for Melin. She's a training in Durant this week. I was supposed to talk about, let's see, I've never done this before, so bear with me. We did, how I got involved in Main Street was Cassie's Kids, which is a mentoring group that we do through Main Street. I've had my mentor since she was 13, and now she's 17. Really cool program. We did Cash Mob. We had seven mobsters. Whispering Bliss, which is a new boutique in Guyman. We had Lunch Mob was at Pizza Hut. We had 13 people there. We had the people who use the office. We had Toastmasters, MPC, HC. And also, we are working on Shop Small Saturday, which is November 25th. We're gonna start at 8:00 in the morning, serving breakfast, and then the local merchants around will have deals and sales to kind of go with the Black Friday thing. And we actually started a committee, so this year, for it. And I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of the site access agreement between T-Mobile Communications and the City of Guyman for installation and maintenance of communication equipment on the Seaboard Farms Water Tower.
Right. This is simply a discussion item tonight, no action required, but I've been talking with Branch Communications for the last couple of months, and you can see by the attachment that they are interested in putting up communication equipment on the Seaboard Water Tower, and they understand the terms and conditions of the agreement that we have with Verizon, and they seem to be open and receptive to entering the same type of agreement. So if I don't hear any objection from the council, then I'll proceed to draft the access agreement and then follow that up with the permit for them to execute, and the terms and conditions will be very similar to Verizon's. So their lease payment for the first year would be about $24,000, and then that would escalate 3% a year for 20 to 25 years. So it will mirror the agreement we have with Verizon, and I can answer any questions you might have, but at this point, it's pretty preliminary.
Is Branch Communications subsidiary of T-Mobile?
I think they're the subcontractor for T-Mobile. They're out of Tulsa, and I've talked to Mr. Williams, and I'm not, I can't remember the woman that I've spoken to, but they've been here in the community a couple of times, and they're very interested in securing that agreement from the city.
You mentioned that's gonna be like the Verizon agreement. The scope of work, will it be the same as well, depending on how much power they're gonna send up the antenna?
Yes. We don't have any design yet. We don't have any site work or design yet for their equipment, but it should be somewhat similar from what I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Any other question? Okay. Thank you. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to increase municipal court fees charged to defendant where there is a conviction from $25 to $30 for court cost and from $10 to $20 for OSBI fees as passed by the Oklahoma State Legislature effective November 1, 2017.
Request from the municipal clerk. You have anything to add to that, David?
No. Nope, that's, when you don't raise money any other way, you raise the court costs in all the little cities and towns around the state, so that's what's happened.
I wanted to raise the CLEA cost as well, but we can't do that, right?
No, that's a fee imposed by the State of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
That might go up next year too, depending on what...
Probably could.
I don't know how much that would have to go up to raise 250 million, but quite a bit, I would think.
Any discussion?
I'd like to hear from the people that hold the, the events, what they, do we charge them a fee?
Currently, we're not charging.
Yes, or anything?
No, currently, we're not charging any fees for the road closures. But the idea here is to identify those events that are sponsored by the city and ones that are not. Most of these requests are, for an example, would be a church who wants, they want to close the street for Saturday afternoon or evening for a kids' program or kids' activities. And so that means we have to send two, three more, or more employees out to set up the barricades and then four or five hours later go back and take them down. And obviously, all of that time is overtime. So that's an expense to the city. And we're, we have drafted a policy whereby we would charge a rate to those entities that are not associated with a church, I mean, not, not associated with a city-sponsored event.
How much have we actually expended extra in road closures in the last year?
If you account for probably the 33 road closures that we've done at an overtime rate, estimated probably close to 10 grand.
Could we not offset those times? For instance, if somebody has a request, have that person take off Friday and come in Saturday and do something like that, some kind of offsetting, so not to incur overtime costs?
That's not fair to the employees, I don't think. Do we not have employees already working on the weekends in every department?
You have some that are on call.
On call?
Yes.
But I'm assuming, and I, most, most, a lot of these events occur where they want to start at 6 o'clock in the evening and go till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, which is, I'm guessing, I'm assuming that's outside of regular hours of employment for our people.
Correct.
Yeah, most of these evenings and weekends.
Have we taken into account the fact that a lot of these people that do close the road at the end of the event, they pick up the barricades and set them over on the side of the road?
The people that are hosting the event?
Yeah.
Well, normally, no, sir.
Okay.
We may have changed that because.
David, why don't you come up?
In the past, you've heard this before, in the past, the city closed the road out here with the Type 1 barricade and said, we're closing the road. It's not legal. The signs that they used did not meet the state requirements. Signed by the letters from ODOT allowing them to do that. We can't continue that. We can't continue that. That's why.
My question, Dave, was, was like over here on Quinn Street, when the church got through with their event, they started collapsing their bouncy houses or whatever the heck it is they do. And in the meantime, some of the other guys from the church, you know, carried barricades over to the side of the road and what have you to, so.
So in the past, there've been things that they let them drag them out of the road, put them in. They actually used to put them out and let the people come close the road. We had training here for two days just for the guys to know how to close them, what it has to be done to meet the requirements. If some citizen drags the signs out, they don't put them upright and they drive them and somebody gets killed, the city's liable because we authorized the closure. We think that city staff that are trained in this should put their things out to open them and put them out there to close them, where we shouldn't do it because it's too much liability. I don't want to go home and say, well, some kid died because we didn't care or we were too lazy or we wanted to save money. What we're trying to do is to cut back on these. And if they do want to have it, to have some money to cover some of the cost to do that. But I think whether you decide to charge them or not, we have to go out there and close these roads properly. We have to take, put the stuff up and put it down properly, especially on state highways. But any road, we're liable if we authorize the event and don't close it properly, it's huge liability. It's not something I'm willing to.
So the city's responsible for?
And that's why they request them to go through a process and we authorize the closure. If we don't ensure that it's done properly, we lift everybody out. And I don't care anything about liability, but I don't want some kid getting run over for some. So we, we need to, if you want to charge, good. If you don't, we still need to go out there.
I don't disagree with you there, David, but I do believe that we really need to give a lot of thought to this before we just slap a charge on it.
That's what the conversation.
It's a discussion item.
Yeah, I understand that.
Well, the other, the other option is that we just limit the times that we close the roads, that we don't, we don't do it for every request. Right now, anyone that requests it, that isn't, and if the request is not unreasonable, then we're doing it. We're just letting you know that there's a cost to doing this.
Right. So I guess my thought would be whether we decide to charge a fee or whether we try, decide to not charge fee or profit, it's, you know, whatever we decide. But at the end of the day, we need, you, your request must come up with some written policy.
No. What I really need just from you is, is there something that the city wants to sponsor to where we have, these are what the city will sponsor? And we have it all laid out to where there's no confusion going forward if that's a city-sponsored event or not.
By sponsoring, waving the fee, if there is a fee.
Yes. If we want to do that, if, if there's something otherwise, however you want to write it up, it's just the general topic of knowing what is city-sponsored events.
Is it possible to get a list of road closures that we've approved in the last year, five years, and how long they were closed for from this time to this time? So we can look at those things?
We can, we can definitely do that. We've got, for the, like I said, there's been, I think, 33 or 34 that we've had since January 1st of this year. It's just, we're getting more and more of them, so.
Think it's getting out of hand. People just, ultimately, it's got to come down to city managers sign up on it, though, right?
Well, in the policy.
But I don't have any policy of saying yes or no. It's just discretion at this point.
Would it be, would it be of value if we got the information, had some time to look at it, and then maybe had a work session on it?
Sure.
Be of big value.
Yeah.
And do that and then, then proceed further with what we want to do? Because, you know, in the grand scheme of things, some of these things are for profit businesses that want to do that and as others are nonprofits. So we may need to make some distinctions.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Sure.
Anything else?
Workshop is good. Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe. All right. Agenda item 12 is possible executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the Guyman Firefighters Union pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B2.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the contract negotiations with the Guyman Firefighters Union.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Stand adjourned to executive session. Okay, here we go. Let's see if this thing will work.
I'll be good. We're good. Look at that.
Everybody back?
I make a motion that we reconvene.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
We'll reconvene as the Guyman City Council. Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action on approving the professional firefighters of Guyman Local 4256 union agreement for 2018.
I make a motion that we approve the contract negotiations with the Guyman Firefighters Union.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
We have at least one member of the fire department here today, along with the chief. Spencer, thank you very much for your effort in getting a new contract. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action to discuss employment applications for employment of the city manager, including an executive session, as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B1.
Make a motion we go into executive session.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Not everybody's left, excuse me. We've got the important people left here.
I'll make a motion that we reconvene.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second until we reconvene.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crown.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
There was no action, oh, I'm there saying, we reconvene. There was no action taken. Agenda item number 15 is reports from city manager and council members.
Only thing I've got to say, and I guess I probably should have said it earlier, is it'd be nice to, with Veterans Weekend, Saturday being Veterans Day, that, you know, maybe think of veterans. Pick one to lunch.
Pick one you, you'd like to. I'm busy tomorrow. I've got a funeral in Smoak.
I have an idea, and I really don't know how to state this, but I would like to see the council adopt a policy that anytime we're considering a fee increase or an ordinance, something like that, I'd like to see it read, maybe titled by title or whatever, in one meeting and then voted on possibly the next meeting. Give us a chance to digest it. Stop where we probably wouldn't have to table so many things. Give the public a chance to digest it and ask questions. And I just feel like we'd be better off than just, I think we've raised a few fees without thinking and maybe we've gone overboard. Just a thought.
Anybody else?
I don't. I don't, Mayor.
I want to, this, this is for, for your information. Last week, I went to the Governor's Water Conference and spoke about municipal water and whatever. As I, as I told you, we've, I've been working on the potential of water reuse. There's quite a few people I forgot that I had meetings with that I didn't write down. But some of these meetings were five minutes long, some of them are two hours long. But these are folks, some of the folks that I interacted with. Thought I'd let you guys know. And I want to compliment all of our city folks. First, I want to compliment the American Legion and Jim Norris and Chet and all the people that have been involved.
I haven't had anything to do with it.
Well, you've been in all the pictures.
That's because Jim made me come this picture.
But anyway, I have been, I've, I've been sharing the story of the veterans banners with other folks around the state, and everybody wants to copy it. They think it's a wonderful deal. I think it's a wonderful deal. And I want to congratulate, or I want to express my thanks to the American Legion. I lost an uncle in World War II. He was, they found him after the armistice in Italy was done that day. So we don't know whether he's killed before or after, but, you know, I never got to meet him. And I've got to buy a banner for him. But I want to thank those guys. I want to thank, again, all of our city staff for the excellent job they do in putting the flags up, taking care of them, and showing our patriotic pride in Guyman.
I'd like to expand on that banner deal just a little bit. We were the first town west of the Mississippi to take this on.
That's true.
And the company that we are doing this through, they were kind of cussing us a few weeks ago because they, somehow Dallas got wind of it and they've taken it on.
These guys said that they're working day and night. That's good.
But, but they said that no town has taken off the way we have. And frankly, Jim Norris is responsible for that.
One last comment I've got. Anybody have anything else? It's a reminder. I'm not sure Serge is going to do her, but it's the chili cook-off at OPSU.
Oh, I'll be there.
This is, this is your last home game, isn't it?
It's senior day.
Senior day.
Last home game?
Last game, as far as we know.
So anyway, reminder about that. What's good for Panell State is good for the City of Guyman. Anybody, anything else?
Congratulations to your nephew, Mayor.
It gets, it's in the genes. Yes, my, my.
It's in the genes.
My, my, my second grandson signed his letter intent last night with Kansas, with Wichita State University to play golf.
D1's no easy feat.
Yeah, D1. And it's, it's one of those, it's a genetic deal, but he didn't.
Obviously, he didn't play golf.
He, he didn't get that gene from me. I trust you, trust me. But you know what? You're going to get that opportunity, Serge Joe. You're proud of your kids and your grandchildren, no matter what they do. If nobody has anything else, any new business? We're adjourned. Thank everybody for.